Obviously, we must pursue this order. The director chose us on the board of the president. We have to do the calls. Let us know if this meeting has been postponed. It's part of six open code. Six open meetings. Six number go five, five, four. Item number two is dedication. From this course.
I'd like all the weekends with safety. First of all, we thank you for the lessons. It was nice for the day to give it. Other, I just ask that everything we do, we're wanting to first students first down. Or you know that we're trying to do best we can. Yes. Your guidance and I asked for my list. Other, we asked for the sermon we just leave. And above all, just be good. That's the most to be corrected. I think that each one of us is individual and different. On three different ideas and knowledge to the table. To help bring about what we believe is best for our community. Probably thank you for all these things in Jesus.
Amen. Item number three is open form. About the community about any agenda items.
Uh, Terry Harvey.
This is nice. I was just gonna say, you'll probably wonder why I'm showing up before many other time. It's strictly just to keep up with the renovation because I know you don't have time to call you and ask questions. So this takes like a test, right? And just get it back out to the community what's going on.
Well, it's appreciated, but I always do have time.
Thank you, Paul. The public knows ranch D S A. He is this a yes, sir.
Uh, this is just simply an awareness that of the districts intent to apply to these grants. We've done this before. Uh, this is an opportunity for the public to have a comment on opinion or a question surrounding uh those particular two racks. Actually, those particular three racks.
Which education, so which I'd be. Right at this time, we go. Uh, go down to item number nine. We're gonna consider this stuff to take appropriate action regarding. Awards of contract for Cheetah Elementary and Public High School renovation addition to take or keep contractors.
Okay, uh, so this, don't know how this is gonna go with. Don't necessarily know how this is supposed to go. Should be that the architects actually should be in the Zoom while they there.
You're here.
Okay, uh, so you know, I'm gonna hand the keys to you. And we'll ask the question at the appropriate time that we're supposed to ask the question. So what occurs right now?
So right now, um, we want to talk about the options um that we have on the table. Uh, cause ultimately it's gonna be the board's decision where we go from here. Um, so if we're looking kind of big picture outlining our options based on the bid uh that's come in compared to our um our budget for the bond. Um, one option would be to cancel the project. Uh, another option would be to put the project on hold from anywhere to a year to eighteen months. Um, now both of those options are risky. Um, because we don't know really what's gonna happen in the future. Um, we hope that costs will begin to come down, um, but you know, currently uh we just don't have a a crystal ball. And uh there there's just this level of uncertainty and we could venture down the road and find that uh the projects are much more. Um, you know, if we pick them up later. So those are kind of the first two. Uh, the third option would be to move forward with one project. For example, Cheetah Elementary, um, do everything there. Um, and then finally, uh, the last option would be to uh negotiate with integrity. Um, for a uh an augmented um sum. And you know, that really comes from uh an exercise that we did to look at uh the funding or the the value um that we've assigned for the cost of construction. Uh, but also some additional funds that Dr. Ward um has looked into and has offered to be able to add to that amount. And so right now, uh, you know, looking at those two totals, um, it's roughly seventeen point one. Um, and Jared, if you, uh, if my math is incorrect, um, you know, please chime in and let me know.
You're doing great, doing great.
Okay, perfect. Um, so yeah, so that's that's kind of the the last option. And so uh if that was the choice moving forward, what we would then do, Colm Robertson, the district integrity would work together. Um, to put together a list of options, kind of vet those options, price those options. And you know, move forward with uh the right fit to achieve the overarching goals um for these bond projects. And you know, trim, trim the fat um and look at reducing costs where we can. So those are, those are the big picture goals. Um, you know, so the the first part of the discussion is really, what does the board want to do to move forward? Um, and then if the decision by the board is to move forward um with integrity, how does the board want to be involved in that process? So open it up to any questions or discussion.
Uh, one thing I'll just by the border of is that we went for a bond because we felt like there were severe needs that the bond actually could fix for our kids. And so make the decision to defer, I just wanna keep, I want us to keep that in mind. Uh, because it it really delays our kids actually getting some of the services that they're entitled to right now, that the bond will provide. And I do understand the conundrum of price. You do have to figure out how to actually pay for the things that we we committed. Or we promised the public that we can do once they actually committed to supporting the bond. So those are the big dilemmas there, but I just wanna kind of, I I think it was important to have that weigh in your thoughts uh with regards to thinking about deferring. Uh, and then one thing that Marcel didn't mention is you don't necessarily have to defer the entire project. Uh, you can defer bits and pieces of it. Uh, and so. You all, you do have a big decision to make.
Uh, the other thing that I want to add to is, and I know we've said it before, but it's worth reiterating, is we are seeing this across the board, all different districts uh right now. Um, working with one district who um bid projects, they came in over budget, they're planning for their next bond. Um, and they're essentially doubling um, you know, the amount of per elementary school, middle school. Um, you know, just to compensate for that escalation. Um, we're working with another district right now that's doing a number of of bond projects that they're trying to get out the gate. And every single project is plagued with the challenge of having to go through value engineering. Um, because they're, they're actually working directly with the construction manager. Um, and the estimates being provided across the board from all construction managers are are just really high. So um, it's a challenge that everyone is dealing with. It's just really unprecedented times. Um, but Clarksville I S D is definitely not alone in this one.
So Marcel specifically, I wanna know, and this board will wanna know, how have districts that passed bonds in November of twenty twenty one made the adjustments that? What are some of the things that those districts have made due to the escalation of costs?
Um, they've made some really hard decisions. Uh, so I think you've, you've already uh put forth the first step, um, looking for additional funding where that's available. In some cases, it's not really possible, but I think um it's helpful that, you know, there is some of that here at Clarksville. Um, and then the other part of the process is really going through that exercise of looking at where um, you know, where the cuts can happen. So it's that value engineering exercise where the contractor and the architect um go through putting together a list of options to consider. Whether it's um materials, whether it's reducing scope. Um, it includes, it it's comprehensive across the project. And so we put that list together and vet it. And in some cases, um, you know, we present really large cuts to our owners, like lopping off uh areas of the building uh just to try to reduce that cost. And so sometimes uh it is a a really tough decision um like that.
Okay, so I just, I'll just give an example. Uh, C T U weight room, ten thousand square feet is what we have planned for. Uh, and I know one of the possibilities is maybe you think about making that an eight thousand square foot building. And what I, what I caution it, the room to think about is we playing for uh and and sold to the community that we would build a building that was ten thousand square feet. What we have to think about as a board and as a community is you don't wanna make a decision like that. That needs to be the last option in my opinion, it's just my opinion. But you don't wanna make a decision to cut square footage or make adjustments that you can't go back and fix. Uh, because this is a building that the community is probably gonna be looking at for the next forty or fifty years. It'll always be a better in my mind and possibly the board's mind that the building is smaller than what it should be. And does the reduced size of some of the adjustments actually meet the standards that we really intended to deliver to our kids? And so I would encourage you and the co- and the the contractors to look at other methods before we, before we get to that point. That should be a last ditch option, because I don't wanna make a decision like that based on current times that really affects the life and the duration of the bill.
Completely understood.
So, and I know I I'm not giving the board much time to talk, and I will stop after this, I promise y'all will. Uh, what? What uh are we putting the cart before the horses with this, trying to make this decision? Before we see where we can trim the fat? Should we not be thinking about numbers after you have actually done that and then have this meeting that we're talking about?
Are you talking about um agreeing to move forward and engaging with contract negotiations?
Is that all we're deciding tonight?
That's correct.
Move forward, engage in a contract, okay? Uh, but does that bound, does that bind us to move forward with projects if we don't like the numbers after you come back and done the work?
Uh, Jared, do you wanna weigh in on that one?
So, so right now, the way that the action on is written is it's giving you the authority, Dr. Ward, to negotiate with the contractor. And if you can reach agreeable terms, then you can execute the contract. You always have the option to say, we have not reached an agreeable term and then not sign the contract. And so I think that's where it, our goal is to work with the the district, work with the potential contractor. And ultimately make it to a project that everybody is is satisfied with to be able to move forward uh from a scope and a dollar standpoint.
Okay, then your role here tonight is pretty simply clear cut to me, just with that. So then I have some questions for the contractors, Steve. And you all are the contracts, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and so Jared, I'd like you to stay on and keenly and intently listen, because I wanna make sure that I ask all the questions that I intended to ask. So I I got a couple of things that I just want to know, just out of curiosity. What is your percentage markup on this, on this job that you've been asking to?
Percentage markup is about four point seven percent. Now, that does not include our general conditions.
Your who general?
Our general conditions are.
And what are the general conditions?
Some of, we'll have a superintendent, actually we'll have two, we'll have a project manager, we'll have job trailer, we'll have all of our expenses to get that uh to to provide you with the service to get the product.
What's the estimated cost of a superintendent?
Uh, estimated cost of superintendent, they were from a hundred and twenty-five to eighty-five. We don't each? Yes.
Okay, uh, and then may I ask you, where are your subcontract, subcontractors coming from?
Subcontractors at the moment are coming from local areas. Uh, we're trying to stay within a base of East Texas subs uh that will be up to the project. Uh, the electrician is Kearney, uh, which is a local guy. He's maybe out of Paris. Is that right, Steve? But he's out of Paris, so we're trying to use local subs, but we also wanna use qualified subs. Um, and to be honest with you, we didn't get a lot of interest in your project from electricians. We have one electrician, that's it.
Um, low.
Yes.
Total.
That's just the way the market is right now. Our mason, who uh has worked for us in the past, is actually coming from Fort Worth. Because we couldn't, I mean, we had very little subcontractor interest in your project. Where we consider this to be one heck of a project. Uh, you guys obviously think it's the most important thing in the world. But we tried to spread out and make sure we were using locals. And we're still pursuing uh additional dirt contractors to get pricing from. We met a guy in Paris an hour ago to talk with him about the project. Uh, so we're constantly looking for the locals, because we we wanna keep your dollars in your community.
So your, your masonry contractor subcontractor is in Fort Worth?
In uh Fort Worth or Dallas, yes, sir.
All right, uh, so I'd like to see a list of all the subcontractors. And, but more specifically their location.
Okay.
Uh, what I wanna know is how legitimately does that work? Cause that's a, that's a three hour, maybe a three and a half hour. Are they overnight here?
Yes, potentially, yes.
And who pays for that?
They do. That's in their proposal to us.
And their per per deal is also in there.
Yes.
Uh, and it, and can we say that that is the standard for every subcontractor that is not in the area?
Absolutely. Some of our subcontractors, their main office may be based in BMW, but they have smaller offices in East Texas, Austin, Houston. So just because their, their main office is here, the same is true for us. Our main office is in Allen, but P is our East Texas, East Texas brother. So we have a division that serves the East Texas area.
All right, well, specifically what I wanna know, but what what this board wanna know is, is that the standard for every subcontractor that may have to be overnight and required for DM? I wanna know who's going to be on the hook to pay that.
Exactly. No, this, when, when you sign a contract with us, that's lump sum. There's no more money coming at you. There's no per DM, there's no printing costs, there's no nothing. Uh, that, that's, that's the bottom line price, that's all you're gonna have to pay. We'll provide you with a payment performance bond that basically guarantees that that's our price.
Good. Uh, I I will speak. That that satisfies. I talked to a couple of guys, and what everybody keeps mentioning is the construction manager at risk. Uh, why don't you tell us the difference between the two, what we're doing? I know the difference between what we're doing, but tell us why most of the areas, most of the districts around here have gone, have chosen to go that option and we're not.
The re- that's, the, the architect can address that as well, but the reason you enter into a construction manager at risk is you involve the contractor prior to the design. And then the contractor helps you basically with your, how do you build a building? How do you, what, what, what paint do you put on the wall? What carpet's cheaper than the next? And the construction manager at risk should have been hired in this scenario, if you, before you even hired the architect. I personally believe that the construction manager at risk process costs the district more money than a C S P.
We were told that at the beginning of the process, and so that's why we ultimately went the route that we went. And Jared, this may be something that you might wanna ask about, uh, may wanna chime in on. But I just couldn't help but notice the districts locally that are building projects, that's what they have in place. And we're the only ones that uh that are, are doing the concealed B process. So I would. I still know who's disadvantaged in that.
So that, right now, that that decision that was made by the board uh at the beginning of the project uh about what the construction delivery method was. And we did talk about it at that time. And so all the points tonight are the, the same points that we would identify today. Uh, so you would not, I, you wouldn't get the value right now and switching over to a C M at risk. And then one of those, one of the main reasons that we looked, it talked about it was, or not going that route is the speed at which we were moving. Uh, seem at risk, although there are advantages to moving uh quickly that you can procure with them. In this case, we would pause, wait for a price, continue to design and potentially would hamper the total project schedule per design is the, one of the reasons we did not. But you're also able to get the local participation from uh contractors here.
For sure. Okay, uh, I don't have any other questions. Uh, I know you pulled me to the air.
Yeah, sir. I'd like to address a few issues with you. I know cost is a big deal. And I know that uh the district wants to save every dime they can save, but yet provide a good value for your students and your teachers. Um, what we would propose is to, for us to agree upon a small fee for us to go to work for the next thirty days for you. And make it similar to a construction manager risk where you get some of those benefits. But here's a perfect example, and I brought one of the proposals with me from a subcontractor. And this particular subcontractor is putting in the uh track uh around your new practice field.
Uh, oh, like, uh, you, you hypothetically speaking, correct?
Well, if we get awarded the project, and if we get awarded the con- we're gonna enter into a contract with them to do, uh, I'm, inside your track, you have got, is it, this is the. This is the, the synthetic turf.
No. We didn't agree to do synthetic turf.
It is just grass, it's just regular turf.
Yeah, we never introduced that. We, our, our track is not the place where we compete. Okay. So, so this is the rubberized track on the outside.
Right.
And his cost to that, to do that rubberized track was four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. But he's given us an option to use, and architects have specified, and and here again, I, I don't wanna step on the architect's toes, because this is a good set of plans. But there's always areas where then our subs could give input to what's going on with the project. And they have specified an X one hundred product from, from this track manufacturer. Well, that track manufacturer has submitted to us two other types of track that are, that they consider not to be quite equal, but that are good products. They've given a Q three thousand proposal for, for that product and also a product for a B three hundred. The B three hundred saves you almost a hundred thousand dollars by going to that product. And if you choose to go with one of their standard colors. And their standard colors are red or black, you can pick up another fifty thousand dollars. So that changes my four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar proposal, it reduces it by almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's, and we also had a discussion on the way over here this evening with our H V A C sub. For the two projects combined together, his, his quote was roughly one point seven million for all of the H V A C. That's equipment, ductwork, curves, controls, everything.
Where is that definitely from?
They're from Dallas.
But they work all.
They work all over this.
We have one here.
They didn't submit a B number. You know, and I would, we would wanna make sure that we vetted them to make sure they're qualified to build a project like yours. So we're not opposed to using them, but this particular H V A C sub told us on the way over here, you can save a lot of money if you let him redesign the ductwork. But we enter into a situation with the architect and the engineer, and he's, he's kind of full-blown engineer on his staff that can design the ductwork. And you can save quite a bit of money on your ductwork. And you know, we're talking possibly five to ten percent. Well, you put that on one point seven million, that's a chunk of money.
For sure.
And and there are other areas that we've identified just from, we talked with the architect this morning. And and we spent a little bit of time looking, uh, the track finishes was one of the things we came up with. You also have a pavilion at the C T E. Um, there's an outdoor pavilion, not part of the interior structure. Uh, it's built with structural concrete, structural steel, uh, it's a structural component of the building. And one of the things that we would wanna take a look at would be, let's do that in the form of some type of a canopy. Something that's a lightweight structure, but still from, and we is, we don't know what your intended use for that is. So we're, we're shooting into dark and guesses here on what we can and can't do. But maybe put some type, type of a a prefabricated canopy across there instead of having structural components that cost money. Now you're putting in a pre, preformed structural canopy. Uh, you've already got canopies on this project. I think there's a few drop-off canopies, uh, and we've got subcontractors that have priced that. Well, we can go back to them and and get a cost comparison between those two items.
So for the next thirty days, this is what you and the, this is what you and O C R would do, is you'll go back and forth. When will the board actually expect to get this particular information?
It's gonna take us two to three weeks to get with the sub to go to work for you and really figure out what the savings are. We wanna meet with the architect and make sure we're not cutting out a a component that you guys absolutely need. Uh, over at uh Cheetah, you're adding an area over to that building? And you're using structural C M U masonry uh with bar joists and steel for the roof? Is there a potentially cheaper way to build that same structure without using the C M, C M U masonry? We could throw that same concept in with the uh seat, the field house of the C T E, but I don't. Personally, the block in a field house is probably the way you need to go. The C T E, it it probably should be block and not some other structure. You've got a parking lot uh that is, I think we're tearing out an asphalt parking lot, put gravel in it. My question would be why? If we're really looking at saving money right now, that would be an easy cut. That would be an easy D W. The other thing I wanna remind the board is that on our base price of uh, uh, twenty and a half million, you've got two million dollars in that line item for contingencies. Um, we know you have other things you wanna do that jack the number up to almost twenty-three million uh with your alternates. Let's wait on the alternates. Let's, let's, let's see how much that contingency we burn through. We may not burn through a third of it, we may not burn through twenty-five percent of it. The contingency is there for unforeseen. And we hope we've done a good enough job that it's gonna have to be a a pretty hit and unforseen. You did, you demo a building and there's a gas line going through, you gotta spend money to remove that or whatever it is. We can't predict that. Then you get down into February and March of next year, and you say, okay, all that flooring we wanna do in the high school and middle school, all the painting we wanna do in the high school and middle school, we didn't spend our contingency. So we can go there and spend that money on that. And and potentially, let's say you use half a million of your contingency. That still leaves you a million and a half dollars to figure out which floors you wanna do and which, which walls you wanna paint. But I do believe that there, what we would like to do is start engaging subcontractors now. And asking the subcontractors to do this very thing. Give us a list of options. Give us a list of items that that you feel like we can save money. And then that process has gotta be vetted out through the architect to make sure, number one, if we're not giving you an equal, that you're aware of what the differences are.
I see.
Uh, and and we could, the other thing I wanna caution you about, and I know money's tight. The cost of construction in the next year to two years is gonna do nothing but go up.
And that, that is consistent with what, what uh Jared actually said, and we did talk. But that was a question I asked.
The, the other factor involved is your H V A C units. If you wanna have school at any of these campuses next year, H V A C units need to be ordered within the next thirty days. Uh, that's what our H V A C sub holds. Roofing, same way. It's ten months for roofing materials once we place the order with, with the roofing contractor. So there are gonna be a lot of ifs and buts that we're gonna have to work through and deal with. I know that one of the objectives that you guys are trying. I know that one of the objectives that you guys are trying to complete over. I say, I think it's over at Cheetum, is there's a abatement that needs to be done.
No, no, sir.
At the old elementary.
At the old elementary, there's a abatement that needs to be done. And you want that elementary pretty much gone before school starts in September. By September, I think your timeframe said by September first, we need to be done with that demo. Well, it's an automatic state notification of two weeks. To, to turn that into the state before we can even do the abatement. And you got to do the abatement prior to doing the demo. So your timeline, according to the plans, is very tight and very pressing. So I just want you guys to remember that as well.
So with that last statement, the question that I have for you is have our current timelines that we've been given been compromised over while it's happening with this?
Your documents show that you're issuing a notice to proceed tomorrow. You're entering into a contract with somebody tomorrow. The good thing about all the savings that we've talked about, even the, even the track, even the H V A C, everything. We can take any savings that we do and move it to the contingency. And then that way the money's still yours. And then we settle up at the end of the contract with what is unused and what is used. And you guys will, will all have to just keep track of the fact that. We're getting a credit back of two million dollars if we don't use any of our contingency. And at that point, you guys have got to determine about what you want to do and what you don't want to do.
I'm going to tell you, I think the will of the board is to make sure that contingencies are thoroughly looked at. And at, at best we can implement it at Cheetum. Simply because we don't want an old versus new, new building.
Right.
And so we understood that the contingencies at the, at the secondary level. That really was a wish list, and that really was a stretch, especially when we saw the proposed cost of what paint, interior paint would be and what an interior floor. Those things we really can capture, the things actually a little bit better.
And, and one of the things that I looked at as well, you're building a new fieldhouse with locker rooms and everything like that. Then you're also, one of your alternates was to redo the locker rooms in the existing school. Well, maybe you don't need to do that. You know, maybe you do need to do that. You know, that's, that's where you guys have got to establish what can wait and what can't wait.
Understood. That, that's fair to me. The, the locker rooms in the, the locker rooms inside of the school across from the gym are an option. If they're an option, because we wanted to make sure that we had a relationship with the girls. The boys, if I go get a brand new locker room, I at least wanted to remodel the locker room for the girls. So it's an alternate, but you kind of see the reason why you feel like that has to happen.
And that's where we just want to work with y'all and figuring out what's really needed and what's not needed. Because it's easy for me to look at it and go, oh, we'll cut that. But then you guys will have to deal with all those.
There's some stories that I just need to do.
So the process that he's indicating is, is the value engineering process that Michelle was describing is really in its scope. And are there opportunities to save money? Make sure it's a good value for the district and move that forward. And so the, what we would ask is to identify a target that we need to save, and then we would start evaluating all those options and beyond. To bring the, the project into the scope and budget and schedule to make that happen.
So it looks like tonight what we have, what this board has to consider is, are we entering into an agreement that bridges you two together? So that you can start having those discussions. If and when we do that, when is the next time that we need to be scheduled to meet, to review your findings?
So I, I would say, based on the, the schedule that the gentleman from integrity identifies, we would need, you know, three to four weeks to work through the process. So then I think if, if we knew the target, we would start working through that and either the board could arrive you tonight with what that target is. Or we would bring back a recommendation for X number of dollars we can proceed with this scope of work, whatever that is, with listing that out.
One of the things that I wanted to say just briefly, as you guys are considering this decision, obviously, integrity is not going to jump with the district for. We do have a lot of experience working in schools. We, we really think about the kids as well. That's our primary area of work. Now that this is a big decision, a hard decision, I love the fact that this was a decision that was traded over. Integrity as an entity can't impression, but the three men that you see before you are, I was a pastor for fifteen years, B was a pastor for years as well. It runs deep in who we are and how we make decisions ethically, transparency, all of those things. We hold very, very strongly to. And, and we will have, I promise you, just as much passion, well, maybe not just as much, but we try to have just as much passion as you do. About this project and what this project does with your community for the next forty years. We will bring those things to the table and try to make this project.
We're in the process right now. We're doing the project for Sam Rager. We actually are breaking ground. Monday, so we're doing a project for Sam Rager. It's about a three million dollar addition.
We're regaling a very civic center. It's pretty awesome. It's not a school, but where it's very civic. I'm a, I'm a East Texas guy, and I just gave it work on over a year ago. So this is my, my part of the country. So I have close ties there. Here I was delivering my refereeing basketball for the team. And everybody up in the sport of the country, I've had a valid opinion about what I like to call it.
But if you're refereeing basketball in this area, then you definitely know us. Okay, so Jared, are we at decision making time now?
I, I would say yes. If the board feels comfortable, they could authorize you to bring back a negotiated contract for.
So, so let me throw this potential idea at you. So obviously to do our due diligence and start the project, we've got to spend time and money. To get to what you need to be in. You tell us where, where you're trying to get. You need to save two million dollars. You need to save a million and a half, whatever it is. The arch, we can get with the architect and start that process. I would only ask that if you bail on the project and say, we're going to wait two years, we're going to wait a year, we're going to do whatever, that we be compensated for that time. And then our, so we sign a contract as soon as possible. Get our ducks in a row with as many people as we can. We present to you your savings. And if you can't do it, then you owe us for our one month of time. But if you enter into the contract now, that gives us the freedom to start negotiating with subs. It, it carries a lot more weight. If I look at them and say, this is my job, I've got a contract, you got to get twenty thousand dollars out of your money. You got to get X dollars out of your money.
Are we not paying for that regardless?
You are, but what I'm saying is that if, if you decide not to do the project, which is one of the options, that we agree on a fee. If you move forward with the project, there is no fee.
What is the, what is the fee that's?
No, I'm sorry. We, we established, you know, let's say we get to the point where you, you guys don't have the money. Or you can't do it. The project just goes away altogether. Then you would agree to pay us a fee for our time. That number needs to be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so let me, let me, with, with what you just said, I want to recall the conversation I had with Jared this week. What we really thought about, Jared, I'd like you to actually talk about this because I'm, I'm going to possibly take not doing anything at all off the table. Jared actually made the recommendation that we really need to at least go forward with Cheetum. And what's in debate is probably the other things. Jared, I'd like you to actually elaborate on the rationale of why we should do Cheetum. Even in the current situation right now.
Sure. So Cheetum Elementary School is an addition and renovation project. It's one of, it's the most complicated because it deals with the existing facilities. And as well from a timing standpoint, and you heard that tonight regarding the H V A C and the roofing. We've got to procure those materials and have them ready, and then we're dependent upon two summers of work that need to occur. So for all those, I'll say click into place, that we would need to start the procurement process and be ready for the summer of twenty-three and ultimately the summer of twenty-four to bring that back and open. So that out of the project, that, that's a priority project where the, I'll say, much of the, or the Clarksville High School project is independent of the existing high school. It's physically on the campus, but it's less dependent on the school year.
So if you choose that option. Sign the contract for Cheetum and there will be no fee. We're going to work on both of them. I mean, that, that at least guarantees that our time and effort and energy moving forward. And as we're talking a deal with the subs, we'll be talking to them about the other one as well. And we'll start the process of beating them up. And then maybe you, maybe in whatever it is. For forty-five days, thirty days, whatever it is, we've got the number to you, and you can sign the contract for the other piece then.
I have a question, I think, to Jared. So of the, of the Cheetum project, is there like just a certain percentage of that bond money that, that's all we can put towards the, the Cheetum project?
The, I, I would have to go back and review the exact bond language, just in terms of what was included. You need to achieve everything that was stated in there, but it did not specify percentages. So, you know, that legally, no, there's not a requirement, but I would say you have a written contract with the public that said you were going to be targeting. You know, a classroom addition and renovation. So if you, I'll, I'll use the eating size. If you only spent five dollars at Cheetum, you would fulfill the bond language, but that would not look good in the public eye.
Well, we provided to the community that Dr. Ward created the proposed plan for Cheetum Elementary Renovations eight point three.
So I think, I think what Brennan said correctly from wrong, Brennan, is that if we came in under. We came in under, could you allocate those funds to another?
No, I'm saying like if we go over, like does that get us in trouble on other areas of the bond? Does it sound like we're going to go over? I mean, that's, that's the reality we're sitting on, so.
So if, if we talk about this, there's some things you just can't not do. So let's just, here's a great example, the track. Because it's in the bond language and it was part of the bond proposal, that has to happen. But much like what these gentlemen said, if, if you want to compromise, you still deliver the track, but maybe you don't deliver it at the quality. Of what we promised in order to get it even. So maybe we would use it to premium materials. Maybe the materials we're going to use are just good enough, but you still have to deliver that track. It just has to happen. You can't just not do it.
One of the options for the cheaper track is a red, but I didn't figure you guys wanted to consider that option.
Brother, I can tell you now, that track could be whatever color it is, as long as the kids can walk and safely run on it. Because I know we talked about color with another, with another vendor, so we, we, when I saw how much the color added to it, I, we quickly don't. But yeah, we'd do black. But if you told me red was a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, this board would have to consider red.
I don't know. In this particular instance, I don't know with a hundred percent certainty, but common sense tells me that you're not getting as good a product. It's like buying a Hyundai or buying a Lexus. You kind of get what you pay for. But if you can, I'm sorry. The same. Yeah, it's a, we, I think it's a. One year warranty on all, well, our warranty is one year, but you're going to get a manufacturer's warranty, which I need to follow up, find out about those.
In, in agree.
Yeah.
It can give you the difference.
It also can have you doing like two of them right now, repairing it three to four times, which is costing you that day and hours that the, the track begin with.
One of the questions that this board had.
I did have a question. Michelle had mentioned that seventeen point one. So is that kind of what we're estimating at right now with two projects and seventeen point one?
I think, and Michelle is correct me if I'm wrong, the seventeen point one is what financial resources the district has available to, to match with the bond proceeds to get seventeen point one. Is that correct?
So that's partially correct. So in looking at our original breakdown, when we first planned out the bond and we had our, our various parts of the project. Cheetum, Clarksville Middle High School, vocational building, athletic complex. We looked at a number of different values. So there is the construction cost. There were numbers for fees, for testing, for furniture, for, you know, a laundry list of things. And all of that together was the bond total. So the number that I, my quick math that I was looking at was really about the hard costs. Plus those additional funds, just, just to kind of err on the side of caution.
Was it ten years ago that we renovated Cheetum and moved up there or longer than that? And we did that carry front and carry front and carry front, and what we got, because I moved into one of those rooms that year, was a completely white room, a third of the size of this one. And I think that's the community's really big fear right now is that. We try to cut too much and all we do is make the same thing we did ten years ago. And, you know, I've taught in that building thirty years, often I went to junior high, I was in middle school, whatever. It's, that isn't building that's stopped sixty years. But the other thing I was going to say is, I sold the bond to people that I could. Based on that old elementary coming down and that track going there. So that is.
For sure.
Deared my heart.
For sure.
I'd like most to take a probate action, resort an award or contract for Cheetum Elementary and Park Booth High School renovation to addition to taking the contracts. Those were made by Mr. Lewis, and then we take probate action, resort an award, contract for Cheetum Elementary and Park Booth High School renovation additions to taking the contracts. Sent by this brother, I'll return it right here, please. Will she care? Now we can go back to item number four.
I'd like your business card. I don't have any contact to make. If you don't mind, just give it to, to later right there. How about one, how about enough for each one of the board members? I like your business card, by the way.
Y'all have anything else for us?
If we do, we'll call you.
We, we are excited for the opportunity. We think it's going to be a great project, not just for us, but for y'all. And we are looking forward to trimming two million dollars out of this shop. More than that if we can.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get to work on it tomorrow and start throwing options and.
Let, let's just, let's just tell them how important this is, because he may not know. We had two failed bonds. That's how important this is. Over what, twenty years?
Well, one, one of the, one of the statements that I think is a hallmark of what integrity is, is that we really don't want this project. We want your next project. And in order to do that, this, we got to bang this one out apart. And that will allow you guys to go get another bond. That will be, allow you guys to continue growing, developing, and making a district.
That will be, allow you guys to continue growing, developing, and making the district ready to speak to the kids.
Hey, you don't want to know what he's saying. Y'all be thinking.
Everybody's watching us. If they're watching us, they're watching you. So it's nothing, it could be nothing.
And she gonna be watching us as closely.
For sure. She was actually on the bond planning committee, so, so breakfast every, or
She, she's, she's attending the OAC meeting with us.
I like it. She's always going to be with us, for sure. Don't, don't listen to him, I want this project, should you ain't go weird.
Anything else for us?
Uh, I'll, I'll be watching him, but I get store about thirty years.
We offered game night and we slipped out.
No, no, we, we, we purposely moved it up so you guys can get a head start on the project.
Y'all very lucky tonight, we're excited.
You bet.
Alright, thank y'all.
Jared, thanks, thanks for showing up and representing us and helping us tonight.
Absolutely, we're excited to get this one started.
Alright.
Alright, at this time we lose item, back up, item number four. So, Mr. Donovan was a member of the higher community, for the C I S D athletic. And he has something about the, uh, the higher, so he has to be on the agenda. And this is, this is a discussion of C I S D athletic, so this is not a normal, uh, open forum, so we, we have some discussion. Anybody, so I was here last week, the two weeks prior, my certain committee for the athletic director. I took that position very seriously. Did my homework on the Tietum business that was given to me. Came in here to open mine, to hire the best possible candidate. I feel like that when we made the decision, we did hire the best possible candidate. We hired our way direction, we did not hire a football candidate. And what I seen last week disappointed me very, very much, because I seen kids come through this door who I felt like were useless moments in adult type business. I was asked to bring the girls in here tonight, because they felt like they were not heard last. But I said, no, I'm not going to bring those girls in here, because those girls, um, committee, let's start back there, that was a good committee. It was a committee of people from this community, and at every turn, people trying to discredit the people that were on that. You had one child on, we made that three, three kids in the school district, his wife as a teacher. He had every business to be on that committee. You had two principals on that committee, which athletic director would be working closely with. They had every business to be on that committee. You had a coach, you had two coaches on that committee. One being the girls coordinator, who would be working closely with the athletic director, why wouldn't she be on that? The other coach that you had on the committee was a young guy who, I want to circle back to that. And then you had myself, and you had a sixteen-year-old kid. Now, I did express concern about that, because I don't believe them kids should be on that. For the very reasons that happened in the past couple of weeks, he did not take it seriously. He did not do his homework with the other candidates. He only did what he wanted to do, that was select the person that he wants. Which wasted my time, it wasted other people's time on the committee, and also wasted those candidates that walked in this room, prepped all night, made those pamphlets and everything, trying to get a, a positive first shape, and being hired as athletic director, part of our SD. Now, that committee was set up for the gentleman who ultimately, I'm assuming that y'all selected. A sixteen-year-old kid, you had the best friend, coach on there, and initially, you had a, a very, very good friend of his, and Miss Evans was on the committee. She was eventually removed from the committee. So that committee was already set up for him in the first ten minutes. Now, when we got in there, it was clear it was a candidate we selected was the best candidate. We hired athletic director, we did not hire a football coach. An athletic director oversees the entire program, he does not see just thirteen, fifteen, nineteen, whatever, you got twenty-two, twenty-three kids on football field. That's not his job, his job is overseeing the entire program, it's not his overseeing the budget of the athletic program as well. Apparently, to me, none of you guys took that into consideration, or I don't know that none of you took it, because I don't really know how you all come to the conclusion that this man that was selected was, should have not have been, so I, I shouldn't say that. But this is what I will say. In order for someone to say that I should not have been on the committee, I've served over fifteen years on this group. I have served in excess of probably, I can't remember nine, anywhere between ten years, or dozens. I have graduated leadership tasking in two thousand and ten, it was a year-long, uh, course in board buildings. And for someone to say that I should be on the committee, but a sixteen-year-old, his word is more valuable than someone like me, who has served this committee, who has served this community, the number of years that I have is an insult. As for the coach that was on the committee, who blatantly said that he can't go against his dog. So that tells me dog being best friend of everybody, he said I can't go against my dog. So that tells me he never had any, any consideration for anybody else, other than the gentleman that ultimately, I guess, assumed that y'all were selected. If I go into a job interview, I expect to have a first shake at the job. If you, if y'all weren't going to take it seriously, build the candidates and the committee, and the choice that the committee made, you should have told us, because you would save us a lot of time. The one gentleman that came in, he got off work, came in that morning, stayed up, turned around and went back to work that night. Waste his time. Now, the same for, I got three horses, four horses actually, these girls athletics. I don't know that I always felt the way that I do by girls athletics, I'm going to be honest with you, because when I grew up, I, I played football, basketball, and such things, until I had girls. When I had girls, my whole outlook on that changed. Lastly, y'all never took those girls into consideration at all. Because let me tell you something about the girls program, I had been coming in here for two years, talking about that girls program. I've been talking to Mr. Ward, I talked to it to the, uh, the athletic director at that time, Mr. Forman. Those girls don't get the same break that the boys get, they don't get the equipment that the boys get, they over here in, uh, they over in a weight room that used to be a cafeteria, a makeshift weight room, they don't have the equipment, the same equipment that the boys get. They don't have the workout equipment that the boys. When the boys' coaches were outfitted for the year, they were outfitted in Jordan, from head to toe, Aramax tennis shoes, and stuff that, and the coaches and the kids on the girls, they get, so they complain. Hey, right, hey, right how you look at it. These girls, they work just as hard as these boys. I know for a fact, because I'm there, sometimes I'm the only one there, and if, and if I'm not there, this, uh, this coach is there, this fix, and usually bring Randy's there, on the way there, until they start playing with the boys on the same schedule, then they have a problem. And then you have some other parents in there that, I mean, I looked at, but one, one is, there's only a handful of those there. And some of you in this room aren't there, because I know, I know it for a fact, because I'm there and I don't see. But you made a decision last week that affected those girls, not knowing what goes on in the programs. And I'm going to tell you that there were twenty-two programs that are probably going to upset some people, but I dare anybody to, to contradict what I'm saying, because it is fact. But last year, I seen enough out there with football fields making sick. I live in this community, I get sick and tired of it, from town to town, from working anywhere else, and I have to hear about things that happen out here on our football field, our basketball. And every time something happens, we make an excuse for it. Oh, well, you don't know what the other people say about those kids on the field, you don't know this, you, it doesn't matter. There's a way you act and there's a way you perform. And we, we, I, you can hear it on sound, anybody sit on that sound like those kids cuss like say. You can't, it's kind of hard to tell those kids stop cussing when the staff cuss all the time. It's documented, Coach Yarroga, Yarroga for it, it's in there in the fire, you go see. I'm not going to tell you what the coach said that night, but if anyone, I, I would, I would ask that you do, go and see what he said, because I'm not going to repeat it. So when these, these kids don't come to practice, same ones that came in here today, they, sometimes they show up to practice, sometimes they don't. But they still go play on Friday night, there's no consequences for those on Friday night. We had a playoff game, a couple of gentlemen didn't even show back up to practice like they were scheduled to, but that, they played on Friday night. I would say that to tell you the difference between two programs, because I'm trying to point out the girls and the boys program. The girls don't do that. They don't have to get in the car and go ride and look for the girls to try to come practice. Girls show up at practice, girls come to work out. Girls take pride in their program. There is no difference treated, girls aren't treated any different, every girl is treated the same. Can't give you a perfect example, with the district track meet. Coach comes up to one of the boys, he says, hey, we're only twelve points behind, I need you to run this race. I ain't going back out there, I ain't running on the race. You got a chance to win the district championship. You sitting there and you going to tell the coach you ain't going back in? Now, on the flip side of that, and, and I'm going to get proud, I remember this time, right, we take time. My granddaughter, she's having a gallbladder surgery, she's getting, you know, surgery, maybe, three, four days later, this check. She comes up to me, she says, she said, Paul, Paul, she says, do you think I should run? Uh, Paul, Paul, and he says, no. I said, well, I don't know, how you feel? She says, well, I want to run, because I want my team to get a chance to go reach. I actually said, I said, well, I don't know, I'm going to let you make that decision, she says, oh, I think I'm going to run. So she gets out there and she runs, and she runs her heart out. And by the time she gets to run to her leg on the relay, she falls out on the track. Three coaches have to run over and get her, pick her up, carry her off the track. She gave everything she had for her team, she wasn't coerced, she wasn't begged, she did not, did not plead for I get her out there to do that. And that same track meet, there's no end way. Matter of fact, Ms. Hollis Randolph never ran to my relay. They needed somebody to run the mile relay, she says, Coach, I do it. She gets out there and runs the mile relay, and they advance. So you see the point of trying to make, there's a difference between the two programs, but y'all never took the time to see. You never took time to ask questions, how this decision of not hiring this athletic director that we selected, how did it affect everyone else? Also, I'm going to talk to you about all of them, but I can get excited there. So let me back up just a little bit. When you didn't hire that man last week, you did, you, you, you not, you missed the girls opportunity to have volleyball coach. The girls haven't had a volleyball coach since Miss Kinsey, and they had people fill in, coach volleyball. Last year they had a paraprofessional, twenty-three, twenty-four years old, never coached in a day and a half, but she, she came and did cause. She only coached a few weeks, because she had to take a turn in the, then Coach Wright had to step in. Well, my point is, that job was open for two months, it was never posted. It was never posted by that Baker Rip, because he wanted to take, he wanted to take opportunity and fill his football roster first. Because if he filled it volleyball coach first, then he might not have been able to offer this coach stipend that he could get on the staff. So he filled that first before he got, two months, I know for a fact, because I called him, I asked him also about this quarter, before the job didn't post. Also, by not hiring that man, that man last week, you don't have, right now, you only have one CDL licensed driver on your staff, that's Coach Wright. You don't have another coach with CDL license, had you hired that man that we, we selected as a committee, you would have had two. You would have had him and you would have had his wife. So now what you're going to have to do, by not hiring that guy, you're going to have to add expenses to the budget, because you're going to have to pay a bus driver overtime to carry these kids to and from the game. Do you know, realize how many games these kids have? Once a season starts, it's a lot of games, it's a lot of money that you're going to shell out for a CDL licensed driver, and I don't know that you can actually make any of your bus drivers work overtime. So I don't know what you're going to do for a CDL licensed driver. And the one CDL licensed driver that you have, that said she will quit if she is forced to come on it, because she's, she's did her time at fifteen years in this district. She has a son who is a junior, and she won't still see her son play. So if she quits, you don't even have a CDL licensed driver. Academically, by not selecting this man, that, that we chose, academically, let me tell you how it affected you. I don't think any of you know, but do any of you know right offhand what your science scores were a year ago? Your, your star, star of science school? Hang on, I'll tell you. Their science scores, they great science scores. Forty-six students took it. Sixty-three percent did not meet. Thirty-seven percent approached. Seven percent met. Two percent matched. You know what his wife was, you still don't know what middle school science teacher right now? She was a middle school science teacher, and a good one at that. And what her superintendent said, and the people over there, they said she was an excellent teacher. You send her back, you still looking for a science teacher right now? So what's going to happen is you probably don't have a science teacher, or you may not, that science teacher is probably going to leave next year. You're going to be right back in the same boat, but had you hired that man, he, his wife would fit your title, the whole time he was in, and you had your science teacher, you would be looking for a science teacher, and that was often going to happen. See, it's more to think about when you do this, decide someone we like, someone we want. And I'm not saying that the coach that you selected won't do a good job, I did see what he did last year. Maybe we're going to prove on it, I don't know, but what I am saying to you is, that committee took the time, and we took all this other stuff, and we took all of it, and we put it all together, and we said, this is our gap. So that leads me to this, the last part. I sat on that board right there where you guys work, or and I know what board obligations. You got a brick thing, you said buddy, you said boss, you hired our superintendent. What you guys done last week, in this, is you hired an athletic director. That was not y'all's job. Some of you may feel like it was, but it is not. Your job is to act on the recommendation of the superintendent. Your job is to proof contract, normally that happens if you don't prove contract, there's a red flag. Normally that happens if you don't prove contract, there's a red flag, something comes up. But there was no red flag, you just simply didn't want the guy because somebody called you on the phone. Our kid emailed you. Our kid came to you, stood up from this podium, played on your emotions, and you said, you know what? No, we don't want that guy. I'm not saying that you don't take into consideration what kids tell you, but what I am saying is. We as adults, we have children that we raise. Sometimes the kids don't always know what's best for them. Sometimes they think they want, aren't really for them. Last week, I think we done this man, that we select, service, because he said right in there with his name, that was embarrassing. That was embarrassing what we did last week. This micromanage, it has to stop. It's not what we supposed to do. Do you realize also, we have had five principals in six years at high school. The principal that we got rid of this past year, I don't know from, I've never talked to him back one time. But this is what I do know. I do know those people calling you, complaining, telling you this and that about, about the principal that you got rid of. And they told you that, well, if she comes back, I'm not gonna be here. You know where they are right now? They're not here. Principal Donald, they're not here. When people call you, you really need to look at the other side of it, because I'm telling you, I said, like I said, I said where you going. When people call you, there is something that they want, there is an angle that they're coming. They are not giving you the full story. That was total embarrassment last, that was embarrassing to me, it was embarrassing to the people sitting on that commu, that committee. It was also embarrassing outside of this, this boardroom, this area. I had people call, talk about what we did was wrong last. You may not think that it's been wrong, but it was wrong. Now, I'm not here to change your mind, because you probably not gonna change your mind. What I am here for is going forward. I hope that you stay within the realm and the scope of what your job duty entails. I hope that you let your superintendent do his job. In that community, I didn't take, I didn't take that with a person. Because for the time that I served in the committee and what I've done for this community and what I did as far as leadership to advocate for you. Or whoever it was, if this is, this does not apply to you, okay, but if it does apply. Where you sit there and say that I deserve to be on that committee, but a sixteen-year-old kid did. I got a problem with that, and a real big problem. That's all I'm gonna say. I hope that, if y'all wanna ask me any questions, you can, because everything I say was fact. I'm not, I'm not trying to read somebody else's mind, I'm not telling you what someone else was thinking. I gave you facts.
Uh, put this on here just in case we really walked out, but not really affirm understanding of what happens next. But it is my recommendation that we move through a scale and scope with, uh, uh, our plans to move. We all on target, we all on time, the big move is really scheduled for the twenty-nine, we done everything, everything there that we have to do. In order to make the move, and then the teachers accept that, things they, so we, we are good, but I just wanted to see if there was any hesitation about actually making that move. Okay, so while, while we're, while we're on that, it's no, no action on that. While, while we're on that, uh, since we know that she, that the whole elementary, we probably all look at that position. Uh, does, does the board have any particular dates that you wanna do an overview of that for the community? Really, it's a scary question to ask, ask me, because I'll say a little bit of everything. In fact, I, I was in there the other day, and really, it was almost like walking back down Pembry Lane. Uh, because I saw an overhead projector in there, and I just don't know where the last time I saw an overhead projector in there. Spooks, uh, old things that teachers used to use that they don't use anymore. And then I'll say, over the years, it's things that the district, if you didn't have a, a space for it, that was the space to put it. Uh, so, I mean, it's, you just have to watch where you step.
So, uh, give it away or send it or what?
Uh, I think that the things that, I don't know the legal aspects of this, I think the things that people want really don't have value. Uh, they were wanting just because it meant something to them. Case in point, the overhead projector. Doesn't really have any value in modern terms now, but someone may remember that, and they wanna actually just take it home, which is thinking about that, I don't know. Uh, as far as the things that do have value. Uh, for the things, the only major thing that I can think of that has value are the air conditioning units that, uh, some people have acquired that. This board will really have to decide how you actually want to allocate those or those. Uh, we're not gonna use those, because part of what we're doing is, we're putting all of our machines on the same cycle. Uh, so we're buying you, and you got the resources to do that, both with extra money and with bond money. So you're talking about, you're talking about bidding, that'll be something I'll have to give a lot of money with. It, it, it has minimal value, if any, uh, so. Yeah, the only thing that, that I'm kind of concerned about as far as doing walkthrough is the debris that's in there. What can we do if someone actually gets injured, uh, and that, and that is a real possibility to go. Then perhaps they do that. So, so what I'm hearing is, the board understands that we're moving forward with the big move. Okay. Uh, we met as a group, as a DACT committee. Uh, made a amendment to our dress code policy, tried to make this easy for audience and the board as possible. Things that are highlighted were the things that, uh, you need that, that are different. Uh, we wanted to clarify if the language would hold, that was always a confusing thing. That's a confusing thing, is almost exclusively at the secondary level. Uh, but we think that this tighter language really clarifies, uh, what the kids can wear, uh, and what's allowed. Any questions on that first, that one? Next. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we reaffirm no facial piercings, that also includes nose piercings. Uh, and we really do need to make sure that we hone in on that. It's clearly not dress code, yet we, we still will sometimes allow kids to walk in with those. Uh, with facial piercings other than the ears, uh, on that. I haven't really seen that be an issue with staff members, uh, so, and that did come up with the committee about. Uh, expectations for staff versus expectations for students, uh, and, you know, I just don't know. There's some things that I just don't know if you should synchronize, but, but to answer that particular question, I can just tell you. I have not seen that be a staff issue at the, the secondary level, I just had, or at any level.
Well, let me ask this question. What are you gonna do if, uh, little Red Red mama coming in with a hair piercing, she works for the school?
If she's in school, if, if, you saying that she works for the school or she just coming in concerned by the deep?
So we don't tell her no, I mean, it's.
Same, well, that's the same thing she just had.
I'm saying, but you didn't, you said you ain't seen it being an issue, so what, what if?
Well, we're probably moving the stats.
So that does come back up on the July, but it was important actually to get this, get this over, get this done. And so I will, I will bring forward a staff dress code for you all, because we just talked about that at, at the campus leadership level. Actually, we spent several days, but today was a reaffirming date for that. I don't have that ready today, but I'll have it ready for July. It's not imperative that this actually gets out quick, this needs to go out pretty quick. Uh, this is one thing that we add, blankets are not clothing, we're not allowing blankets into the building. Uh, you would think that you wouldn't have to say that, but you do. Uh, the kids will try to reflect to school. Uh, there was, there was one parent on the, on the DACT committee that really talked about. Allowing blankets for all campus activities, when it depends on what the all campus activities are. You're going to, uh, to, if it was up to me, but the committee actually, the, that committee actually, this is how they wanted written. And I do have to respect the, the, the words of the committee. I didn't agree with this, but they overwhelmingly. They wanted, they wanted it in there that kids could actually wear blankets to all campus activities. But that exceptions need to be made to that. We're not walking into a museum in Dallas, a museum in Fort Worth. With our kids wrapped up in a blanket, uh, but if the kids actually have a track meet or something like that. Uh, and they're sitting in the stands with, uh, blanket, I'm okay with that. So that rule, there will be exceptions that will be made to that rule, so it's not just gonna be a blanket, uh, deal. But the committee did want that exception in. Well, and we're okay with a blanket there, I don't think you look so out of place with that, but we're not walking into the parole museum in Dallas. And the kids all got blankets, so, uh, next part. Uh, cell phone devices, uh, we really clarified and cleared up cell phones. What the new administration is wanting to allow, I agree with this after they explain to me, is. The rule that we had at first, and this is something that we should be prepared to make changes to if it does not work well. But you have a new, a, a new principal that, that really wants to put trust in the kids, I've been there and I've done it. Uh, parents buy cell phones and we take the cell phones and traditionally we told them, put the cell phones in the locker, don't move them back there. Uh, let's say that was out of the kids' day, uh, and parents really bought the cell phones, I know, what about, when I have this child, I want my cellphone. I want my kid to have cellphone because I wanna be able to reach out to him if I need to. Uh, so there are opportunities that they carved out for the kids to actually have their cellphone in to be okay. Breakfast and lunch, so a kid can actually go to their locker and get their cell phones and actually have this device. We actually think that that actually will pre, present a sense of calm in, in the cafeteria as well, and it's a reward. If we don't like it, or if the kids abuse it, or at least other issues, we'll come right back here and we'll make, we'll make an amendment to it. But I did want the board to be aware of that, of the cellphone part. Okay, go down to the next part, because we need to talk about when we actually take a cellphone from a kid, or when a kid is actually asked to turn a cellphone in. So I'm walking through this, uh, cell phones will be asked for if they are visibly seen. So let me explain why we're gonna do that. Uh, you, we frequently see kids with a cellphone in their hand, if it's in their hand, we should be asking for. Why? Because I can't differentiate between what you're doing with it anymore. The kids actually frequently take, put their phones in their pocket, and they're pretty disciplined about leaving them in their pocket. But if we see the phone, the teachers really should ask for it, because if we see the phone that's in your hand, what I have to think about is the next thing that you wanna do is, you gonna use it. Uh, even if it's sitting on top of the student's desk, there's a place for the cell phones, it shouldn't be in the locker. Uh, and we've clearly said that in the, uh, in the, uh, in the policy, so if it's in your hand, that means it's not in your locker. Uh, refusing to turn any cell phones, we have to make this simple for the teachers. The policies in the past have really relied and depended upon the teachers to implement this problem and deal with it. And I wanna be able to have a policy where this is easy for the teachers to implement. So if a kid refuses to turn in your phone, that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. Kid refuses to turn in your phone. They'll be placing an ISS until a working cellphone is willfully turned in. That's what I mean by working, these kids are crafty. I've seen all that, they'll bring your phone that was just in a drawer and say, this is my phone. Oh, it's got to be a working cellphone. Right, so the question becomes, what does a staff member do when a kid refuses to give them the phone? Uh, the kid actually will just go to, the kid actually be signed ISS and they're in there until they turn the phone in. My experience with that is, that's lasted eight days. The longest I've ever seen a kid do that is, they, they stay in their week. And then they finally came and handed you their phone after, because they got tired of ISS. What a kid does that, I realized that I'll never probably have to deal with that again, because they know. Uh, that the consequences are, are really, really, that we're gonna take your phone. But the staff now brings the phone to the office where it will be stored until a pa, parent pick up. The difference is, they went the expectation last year. It was exclusively the teachers that had to get the phone from the kid and then they had to store. I didn't like that idea because it makes us responsible for a lost phone. Uh, that, the cell phones need to be centralized. Phone will only be given back to the parent after fifteen dollars fee has been presented. The cycle will present itself each time, so the fee doesn't change. And then the other thing that we removed is, I did not like the idea of, kid gets phone taken. Parent comes up, wants to pay fifteen dollars, get the phone back, and then we say, well, you gotta wait twenty-four hours. I just don't know if I would agree with that as a parent myself. Uh, I'm, I'm doing everything that you need me to do, so get your phone back. I'll deal with that myself. I don't know how twenty, wait twenty-four hours makes the situation better.
They waited twenty-four hours. I think before, it was, uh, the second time it was a year.
I think you're setting yourself up for a big debate, and what I'll say is, if a parent walked in there, put myself on the front, on the, on the parent's side. I could just, it'd be hard for me to argue against that. So I wanted that removed, so there is no time period. Once a parent comes in and asks for the phone, it's their problem, they're doing everything that we asked them to do, we give it.
It was a brand new phone too.
Okay, well, this keeps us out of it. Uh, so are there any questions or concerns regarding what we're handling with dress code and with cell phone?
So, I noticed.
Right.
So, is this just gonna be added into that?
It should be included into the student handbook. Uh, you know, that was passed into that committee, uh, and, and we learned it, right, and it's already, it's already decided. Well, that's always been our problem, I've always said, we really, there was just small pieces of press, but the biggest problem with dress code was the enforcement. You have a staff that thinks it is exclusively the responsibility of the administration. That's what we're gonna work on at the beginning of the school year, is making sure that everyone understands that. The only way you're going to win in this situation, everybody has to see the same thing.
Most member of this board is doing proof, she has to do the dress code policy, second part, Ms. Shannon, all of them right here, please. Most care. I make most approve seventy cellphone policy. Okay, most member of this board is with me approved, she has the cellphone policy. Second part, Ms. Brenna, all of them right here, most care. Item number eight is discussed, approved, it's next to the slide.
I'm gonna hand this one off to Judy.
Um, it's been brought to our attention that other districts give a stop in for dyslexia. And when we started checking on it, we realized that, uh, dyslexia, uh, teachers have a lot of certifications. That they have to go to the room, sometimes take two years to get, and dyslexia teachers are very, very difficult to find. I was actually shocked that they didn't have a stop in for dyslexic teachers. In fact, this, this is the way it came up, it doesn't matter, but they tried to take her away from us, and that's how they're gonna get her, ours. In fact, this, this is the way it came up, it doesn't matter, but they tried to take her away from us, and that's how they were giving her, ours was for a stop, as simple as that. And that's when we realized we don't have to. So we just think that it, it would be necessary to have that for her. It's hard to get dyslexic certified dyslexic. I'm gonna say three thousand. That would be doable.
I made a motion to approve the dyslexia statute.
I'll say it.
Okay. Motion made on this rule is to approve this dyslexia statute, second by the parent, all of them right here. Most care. All right. It was debated in closed sessions, perfect, different phone section. Five-five-one dot self for first that matter, four of us. Four of us, yes, the F A T. Five-five-one dot self, two students. Except for. Eight oh two. I made a motion to hire Christopher Davis, that lady, Rick. I made a motion, paid by, uh, Mr. Lloyd to hire Christopher, uh, maybe, sir. I'm just trying to apologize for that, I think. Yeah.
Doctor Ward has accepted the following persons, Mason Marshall, C M H S, J C Clark, C E S, Eddie Allen, C M H S Cafeteria. And he has extended employment to Bridget Scott at C E S over D I. Erica Melvin, C E S High Schools. Uh, Maish Cherry, uh, C E S Second Part Math, S I T, and sale under D I. Rachel Battle. Under, uh, eighth grade science, C M H S D I. Troy Dion Scott at C M H S, D I, R six, seven, D I. And Matthew P for C M H S Specialty.
I'm gonna, this, this is gonna be the third, eight oh three.
Hey, just to clarify for the board, we are done.